Evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are five forty-five on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, whichever more in the future shall be referred to as Dr. Pamela Fox Day. Because we just got back from the dedication ceremony and we presented Dr. Fox with a proclamation calling today Dr. Fox Day. So it was a little warmer event than this is, so hopefully, uh, it was outdoors this afternoon at two thirty six. It was a little warm. First thing I gotta do is, um, on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I received a request from Counsel Robertson to participate remotely in the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents his physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask for Counsel Robertson to state the personnel matter, which makes him unable to attend tonight's meeting.
I am traveling in Charlotte.
Very good. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counsel Robertson's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Mayor Claffey.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedure, member number three, I move to allow Counsel Robertson to remotely participate in the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter.
All right, we have a, a, a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Erwood. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Erwood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, Counsel Robertson, would you please state the remote location from which you are participating?
Charlotte, North Carolina.
Thank you. Can everyone on council and in the audience hear Counsel Roberts?
Yes.
Very good. Welcome. Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
All right. The, uh, first thing on the agenda is the consideration of the work session and regular meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mayor Claffey, I'm going to approve the work.
Counsel Wood.
Okay. I'm going to approve the work session agenda and the regulating agenda as, as presented.
Very good. Motion is made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Holmes has seconded. All right. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Erwood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. And the first thing I want to do is now that the meeting's off and running, we're going to welcome the school board for their participation tonight in our session. And I will ask the Chair of the School Board Natasha McCurdy to convene her meeting.
All this meeting of Stanton City Council. I'll turn it over to Doctor Smith and Brad.
Thank you, Ms. McCurdy. A good evening, Mayor Claffey, members of City Council. Thanks for having us tonight.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
So we don't, we don't have a lot because if you've been reading the news lately, there's still no state budget. There are three versions still floating around and we're not sure which one we're going to get. The latest news we've heard is that the General Assembly will not have a budget until the end of June. So we're, you know, so with that, we don't have, really have anything new to report from last time we came. Um, it presents some complications for us, obviously, um, when you're thinking about positions like this happened a few years back, one other times, we'll get to the end of the school year and we won't have a budget. And so the danger then is sending teachers off for the summer with no contracts. You don't want to do that. So one of the things that we'll have to revisit this year is we will issue contracts to staff the second week of May, but it'll come with some legal language that, you know, this contract is null and void unless the state budget money comes in. So I know that looks and sounds kind of scary, but, um, we've had to do it once before and it's, it's much better to do that than to send teachers off for the summer with no contracts. So, um, that'll be coming into play soon. Um, beyond, beyond that, um, we're, you know, everything, like I said, is pretty much the same. We really appreciate the revenue share agreement that we have with the city. Um, again, it's, it's got us on the right trajectory and we don't have any, we're not asking for, um, anything else. Uh, I was, Brad has a few more details and I think this is going to be pretty brief. So if y'all have questions at the end, we should have plenty of time to answer them.
Very good.
Um, I just update you sort of the, what we can expect coming, moving forward. As you know, the school board approved, uh, the FY, it's FY twenty-four budget on March thirteenth. Um, and as always, we've made a few minor changes subsequent to the board's approval. Um, but the budget is basically on standby as we wait for the General Assembly and Governor, uh, to pass a budget bill. Um, the General Assembly convened yesterday to take up, uh, House Bill fourteen hundred, which is the budget bill. Um, but it's unlikely that that bill is going to be signed into law before April twenty-seventh, which is when you all are scheduled to approve the FY twenty-four budget. So the main thing to understand is that the state's budget, uh, until it's signed, uh, we're going to remain in basically in a holding pattern. Uh, we will have, uh, and we'll make a few more minor changes, none of which will impact, uh, the city in any way and which we don't anticipate will, will, uh, cause us any significant problems. Uh, once we have actionable information and data from this, from the state, uh, we will come back to the, the council and the school board with an amended, amended budget. It will be off and running.
And it'll probably be July.
Yeah. What is the, you said there were three different proposals and what is the variance and how much is it going to affect you all? With function A, B.
Yeah, there's a pretty significant difference between the three of them. Most school divisions built their budget based on the governor's budget because that one's right down the middle. Um, the House budget is a little less, right? And Senate budget is more, is significantly more. So it's, it's really kind of, it's still all over the place. Just nothing has really moved on it. There, there are three different proposals and.
In, in fact, there's a, there's a fourth one they're calling the skinny budget and you may have had it, heard it referenced in some of, uh, other divisions, uh, budget debates and negotiations with, with their appropriating bodies. And that budget, I mean, that's not even.
That's the worst one of all.
That's the worst one of all.
School divisions.
And it's sort of a, a worse, and it was really just designed to address that, uh, that, uh, mistake that they made in the, in the calculation. And so it didn't really address all the other issues, basic aid, lottery funds, um, and those sorts of things. So we've just bypassed that because that, that's, that's probably going to be the furthest from what they come up.
We don't like the name of it either. Those two words together, skinny and budget. That's it. It's not too promising.
Uh, Garrett, do you know if, um, the V S B A or the Superintendent's Association, are they putting out anything to try to make, you know, the General Assembly aware that this is not good and that they need to be doing a better job?
There's plenty of advocacy coming from both of those organizations. Um, and, and you know, it could be with the, the state superintendent, um, resigned, um, a few months ago. The new one, um, tomorrow morning, all the superintendents in the state will have their first introduction to the new state superintendent who's coming from Tennessee, but we don't really know what to expect. Um, but I really think, you know, that, that's a small factor. I think the bigger factor is, you know, the, the parties in the General Assembly trying to come to some agreement. Um, and with the final budget.
Primary. No one wants to commit at the last possible moment. So that's what we're dealing with.
So when you're building your budget, do you use the House bill? Do you use the governor's recommendation? Do you use the Senate bill?
Uh, we're, yeah, we're sticking with the governors, which was originally built.
Middle of the road.
Yeah. And it's, uh, the governor's budget, for example, had a, a five percent SOQ, uh, pay raise. The House and Senate had a seven percent, which is really hard for almost every division in the state.
And every municipality.
Right. Very good. Further questions, counsel?
I just have one. Does every teacher sign a new contract?
Yeah.
Every year?
This is a yearly thing?
Right.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. And when does your school year start?
Next year, it's August tenth, I think, is the first day of school. Yeah, teachers will be back this start of August.
That's our population now.
Our total enrollment?
Yes.
We're still about twenty-seven fifty, not counting the preschool, which grows every year, a hundred and twenty little people over there. And we're adding another class to the preschool. That's been, that's in our strategic plan. We think that's a really smart place to invest our resources.
So how many classes are in that preschool?
So next year we'll be up to, um, we'll have five four-year-olds. This will, actually, this will be a six, four-year-old class, three, three-year-old classes. Um, and then we, we even have a zero to two early childcare that has about eight children in it.
Is that a high needs class?
Yes.
Hmm.
Are you seeing any, like, you know, how trends, sometimes there'll be a grade level that has a lot of students and then you're scrambling to try to find space to put another class on. Do you have any issues like that for, that you're going to see?
We, we do. And on our school board meeting on Monday night, we had to revisit the policy for special permission. At the start of the pandemic, we said if, you know, unless your staff, if you live in, in, you know, Augusta or Waynesboro, um, you used to be able to pay tuition to bring your, um, child to Stanton City Schools. We did away with that and we did not reinstitute it because we're, we're too full. So, um, basically we don't take any, any children from outside of Stanton City unless it's staff children.
How many do you intend to graduate from Stanton High School this year?
Generally, um, there are about two hundred students in a class, give or take. So we'll be a little bit over two hundred. We have, uh, twenty-three seniors right now that a lot of us have paired off with and are working really hard to get them across that stage on May twentieth. And that's one of our, that's our equity team project at the high school. I'm, uh, really happy to be part of that team. We met yesterday. We talk about where our kids are, um, where they have to get their grades up, what we can do to help them. So we're, we're helping this last group get across and you think about it, these were kids that were probably, um, in ninth grade when the pandemic hit. So that really put them, you know, at a disadvantage being out of school that first year.
So a lot of pressure for the next five, six weeks, huh?
Yeah, a lot of pressure. Yeah.
There's lots of things coming up in the next couple of weeks for the school system at the high school. Prom, senior day. When's the walk for all the class, the seniors to go through the elementary schools?
You know, I will, I will look that up and get it back to you. That is a lot of fun.
So wonderful.
It's a lot of fun. And you see the seniors in their graduation regalia, walking through the elementary schools. And when these big kids see their old teachers, it is really, is really touching.
Oh, that's cool.
It really is.
You're a jerker.
Yeah. Great tradition.
Well, I'm sorry we missed the tour with the Jared Hatcher's government.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll reschedule. It seemed like everybody had conflicts that day.
Yes, glad to do something and, uh, yeah, I thought I was, I was looking forward to that.
Yeah, so that's a fun one.
Any questions from school board to members of council? Let's turn the tables. Come on, Mr. Boyle.
Glad we had it formally in place. We've worked hard and long gone to get that done.
Good. And it seems to be working.
Easy it's, it is.
And it took all the pressure off. And, you know, I think we need to mention the fact that, uh, this year, uh, we will be giving fifteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of City of Stanton money to the school system, which is an all-time record amount. I mean, it has never been that high. And so we're, we're proud to be part of that as well. So, you know, it's a win-win for everybody.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. Well, thank you for every, everything y'all do. Really. It's important. It's tough to drop.
Anything further? Any other questions, counsel?
Just, are you getting a feeling for the teachers coming back? Is there a good feeling amongst teachers?
I, I, I think the general feeling is this has been a great school year.
Awesome.
And, uh, we have very few vacancies.
Excellent.
I can think of a couple. Um, so.
Yeah.
We're, we're in good, we're in really good shape with staffing.
Glad to hear that.
And that, that was true all the way from last August. When you started, you had the lowest number of vacancies compared to, uh, Waynesboro and Augusta. I was aware of that.
According to Mr. Van, because I, I asked him, you know, we've got this many vacancies. He goes, that, we're about normal. We're about normal, you know? You know, it seems to be a pool of, of applicants and the pool of people you can bring in are probably not as robust as it, as it has been in past years, but.
Yeah, numbers wise, but it's still quality, good quality.
Yeah, you must be doing something right. So we're good.
Oh, there you go.
He's, he's hiding behind that column back there. I didn't see him back there.
Yeah.
His ears must have been burning when they were talking about it. Yeah. Well, congratulations, Mr. Van, on that good year. Anything further?
Oh, great.
Can y'all have anything for us?
Uh, just again, thank you for your support. We appreciate the partnership. We know the city has lots of needs. The schools have lots of needs and, and we know, we, you know, we've just got to be as smart as we can with the resources that we have. So we appreciate it.
All right.
Well, it's a pleasure to have this relationship and, and seeing everybody get along. It's wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you for the work you do.
Appreciate it, you guys. Thank y'all for coming.
Natasha, do you want? That was pretty, that was pretty simple. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You're welcome to say it's not.
Uh, yeah, Liz is coming out to the hot seat now.
One after another.
Yeah, here comes Jess.
I'm going to run this for you.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go to settings.
Okay.
That was bothering me.
Well, very good. The second on our work session agenda this evening is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget work session. I'll turn it over to Ms. Bogart.
All right. I'm going to let Ms. Moyers, our CFO, walk through. We've worked on this together since this past week. Um, so, uh, I don't know, maybe we can avoid a work session later this week. We shall see.
Oh.
Let's keep that in mind as we go through this. So.
Carrot.
There you go. See, I'll start out with the good stuff. All right. I'm going to let Jesse take it away.
So this evening's work, uh, work session is focused on the general fund budget. The general fund budget for FY twenty-four is sixty-nine million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three fifty-one. That is a six point two percent increase over FY twenty-three. As you know, the proposed tax rate is eighty-nine cents at this point. And one cent of real estate tax is worth two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two sixty-one. Um, I want to review what's not being funded in this proposed budget at the eighty-nine cents. The J D R court relocation, for which we do not know the solid cost, cost estimates at this point in time. The FY twenty-four capital improvement plan of one million, two eighty-six is, uh, not being funded at this point in time. We have not funded any new equipment requests from our city departments, uh, that is worth seven hundred and eighteen thousand, five oh-two. Um, we are not funding any new personnel requests at this time, other than the proposed Director of Community Development. Um, that is five hundred and thirty-two thousand, six ninety. We currently do not have the cost for the five-year comprehensive plan in this budget that was requested this year at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and right now we're not funding the entire budgeted debt service. Um, we are funding our entire existing debt service and a small portion of what we have planned, but not the entire planned debt service. And just as a reminder, this budget does include three hundred thousand dollars in attrition savings. So at the last work session, council would ask, um, staff for ways to reduce the proposed rate, um, at least up to three cents. Um, so in the next three slides, I'll lay forth a way to do that, um, if that is council's desire. So the first place, um, I looked is a few of our local tax revenue lines. I'll be the first to admit that I, like other finance people, we're very conservative when it comes to budgeting for future revenues, especially when they're volatile revenue lines like meals and sales tax, which can dip very quickly when the economy starts to drop. However, I do recognize the fact that we have had large carryovers that passed few years, um, that followed the global pandemic. And this was largely due to revenue lines performing better than we expected in those areas. So in light of this, um, I and other staff are willing to propose a compromise, if you will, to increase meals and sales tax above the FY twenty-two actuals, but not all the way up to the FY twenty-three projected revenues. So this would allow us a cushion if there is a small economic downturn. Um, we don't have to react as quickly because we still have some cushion built in there. And we monitor those on a monthly basis and we'll be able to react quickly if we're not meeting goals next year to make changes. So I'm laying forth a possible increase in mail, meal sales tax revenue or meals tax revenue for two hundred thousand and an increase in sales tax revenue of one twenty-four, five hundred. The next category is lodging tax, which was already slightly higher than the FY twenty-two actuals. However, after discussing recent talks, uh, tax lodging revenues with the Commissioner of Revenue, we felt we could increase this by another hundred thousand dollars. That will take that category up above the projected twenty-three. Um, and this increase is mainly driven by the Airbnb and other similar companies sending tax revenues directly to the city now that has result, resulted in additional revenue. And finally, our last tax, our last revenue line that we felt comfortable raising was the business license revenue. Our proposal here is that we could raise this revenue line by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This would increase business license revenue by two million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. So these four potential, um, changes total five hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars, which equates to two cents off the real estate tax rate. The next two slides address potential changes to the city's expenditures. The first slide, we, I reviewed the budget for what I consider one-time expenditures in our FY twenty-four budget that we could potentially fund with FY twenty-three carryover money. Um, these include, um, wharf tree replacements for thirty thousand dollars. The E, uh, nine-one-one software that was requested for sixty-five thousand dollars. The entrance corridor overlay for forty-five thousand, uh, Stanton marketing, um, plan for forty-one, Stanton Crossing marketing plan for forty-one, five. This totals one eighty-one, five hundred and equates to about two-thirds of a penny off the real estate. The other third cent would come from budget reductions. The P D C, that eight thousand, seven oh-nine, that is their reduction. Um, they have revised their budget since they originally proposed it to us.
What is that?
The Planning District, it funds like the bright busts and things like that.
So they revised.
They revised their budget. This is not us cutting their budget.
Good.
The enterprise zone incentives, um, we could reduce those another twenty thousand. We had started at forty. We reduced it third, to thirty thousand in the proposed budget, but we can take that all the way down to ten thousand for that, um, program. Already talked to Billy Vaughn about that and he's okay with that.
How much do we spend this year?
Zero. We have not spent for a few fiscal years, but he says we have to maintain something because we have the program. So we can't eliminate the budget altogether.
This is incentive for new businesses to start.
In the enterprise zone.
So they, they get breaks on like their water tax and.
Yeah, what is that cover?
Like that. Um, he said it could cover things like helping them advertise and things like that, but it has not been used in a few years.
I know when I got it, when I first came to town, yeah, you got a reduction in your water sewer tax and, and, um, and then there were some other things that they helped with business license, stuff like that.
It, well, it hasn't been used, isn't it? Hasn't been offered at all or no one has asked about it?
Nobody's asked for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. Do we have a brochure or anything that explains?
Um, I don't know, Billy Vaughn. I could ask Billy and let, let you know.
Yeah, because that could be a matter of people just not knowing about it. So, um, that's a problem. Yeah.
Uh, he's the only one that administers?
His office, yes. The other, um, remaining seventy-nine thousand dollars would come from organization-wide operational reductions. These reductions would need to come from various departments citywide so that we're not, um, burdening one department so much. So it's citywide across many different areas.
Any examples of, do you have any examples of that?
Not particularly. I have looked through them and I've come up with the amount. Um, so something I feel comfortable about. I've not talked to department managers about it, but I think it's something that will be comfortable with.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be releasing any part-time people.
It's not. No, it's not. This is operation expenses only. And what I did is take a real close look of what they've done in the, uh, last three fiscal years and compared it to the budget. And if they're not using it, I just take a thousand here, take two thousand there.
That's going to last them all year.
Yeah. Yeah. Use it. Um, sorry, Jesse, forgive me. I'm not sure what exactly what this means, but the Planning District Commission is reducing their proposed budget, which means our contribution to the budget would be lower. Is that what that means? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So this brings the total potential real estate tax reduction to three cents. This would potentially drop the proposed rate to eighty-six cents per hundred. So another consideration that we have here is there's been a lot of expressed interest in the part-time permit technician position in the building services, planning, zoning services and environmental services area. This is a part-time position that would fill a full-time position that was eliminated around twenty-ten to do the economic downturn. Um, this position would allow the department to provide more timely, efficient and responsive service to the public. In addition, the, this position would help to address processing delays in that office, help with office coverage during like lunch hours or vacations. And it would start to allow for succession, succession planning in that office.
So permitting issues and things, this would help with that.
The front office there, the window in that, that area. The cost is approximately twenty-two thousand, six oh-seven, and that includes the part-time wages and the FICA taxes. Um, if it's council's desire to fund this position, then we would more than likely fund the additional about, amount by adding additional operation deduction, uh, reductions up and above the seventy-nine thousand that I just mentioned. Um, and before I wrap up, I believe it's important to review the looking forward slide that was in last week's presentation. Um, these are things I just think you need to, to keep in the, the front of your mind. Um, the Harrisonburg, Rockingham, Gerald buyout ends in FY twenty-five. This will result in an, uh, annual deduction or loss of revenue of about six hundred and seventy-one thousand. The first fiscal year affected by that will be FY twenty-six. Uh, we do not know our final J D R court relocation cost or how much debt service we'll have to issue at this time. Um, we'll have a significant increase in operating costs that won't, it will start in twenty-five and be fully operational in twenty-six. Um, the MS four program requirements, uh, western revitalization, Union Town infrastructure improvements, greenways and pedestrian infrastructure, public safety and other general government space needs, and then future capital needs for our schools. And so that concludes everything at my budget work session, so I can open it up to questions or feedback at this time.
Let me, let me start out by, please, please explain the J D R court operating costs to start in twenty twenty-five. Um, there's a lot of misconceptions about the money that has already been spent for the J D in our court. Could you please explain that for the benefit?
That cost is mostly going to be in the Sheriff's Department from adding additional staff. Um, and that's, we have it starting in FY twenty-five because he said it's not wise to wait until you open to hire those staff. He needs time to get them trained and up to speed. So most of that cost is going to come from that. The other costs will be just the utilities and the maintenance and the, the cleaning of the, that building because that's going to be a new building.
Twenty twenty-five money. It has nothing to do with twenty twenty.
That is true. This is looking forward.
Okay. Now, talk about the two point three million that is in the current budget. Do people think we have already spent?
If not. Do you want to explain that?
Please.
Yeah, I know what they're talking about.
Just get that out of the way.
So the two. What money? Uh, so the two point three in ARPA that council allocated towards the J D R court facility has not been touched. That is for construction, if we need it for acquisition, whatever we need it for that project, that has not been touched. The only funds that have been spent to date is about twenty-two thousand dollars. And actually I will go over this in more detail when I do the presentation and the regular meeting. Um, let's see, for, for the space needs assessment, there were three things that the twenty-two thousand spends before. Not a single dime has been spent on the Hardy lot. I know that has also been a question. I'm going to go into more detail on that during the regular meeting. So only about twenty-two thousand dollars though, and not the two point three. Correct.
Good. Just want to get that out there. Get that, so everybody's aware.
Set aside for future construction, wherever that may be.
The two point three is.
Not only the two point three, but any excess ARPA money that is not spent on the, on those other projects will end up in that account.
That is correct. Council authorized that we could roll those funds into the J D R project once other projects start closing out and they're completed.
We're going to need additional monies in that account.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I hope that's clear.
We'll explain it again during the regular meeting.
Say it again later.
Yeah, we'll definitely say it again later.
It might need to be said through three.
It's okay.
Uh, that's fine. That's good.
Yes, sir.
All right, questions from council?
I've got one here, a couple really. I noticed that we allotted a hundred thousand dollars for the CAT system. Towards funds, put a CAT system in, but wasn't it originally like, we would do it in three years and not like?
It was over three years. That hundred thousand dollars is just for year one, and then there was three seventy five in year two and three seventy five in year three.
Is it still that way?
I, I got a update on that amount this week. That it's not going to cost as much as we originally thought with that early estimate. It, we, has the potential of costing like around three hundred thousand or less.
Wow.
So you guys had mentioned last week about the fire truck reserve. Um, you could, it is in your power to repurpose that to the CAD. Um, along with the hundred thousand that's in the plan to be funded with carryover, you could fund the CAD all in FY twenty four if that's your desire.
The officer that spoke uh, at our last meeting said that, you know, the system was.
He's here.
It was, you know, it's twenty, twenty five years old. I mean, that's uh, that's, I don't know anything computer wise.
So with with those updated cost numbers that were coming in, uh, it. Down from eight hundred and fifty thousand or so to three hundred, it it's much more manageable at that, at that amount, but.
And uh, and as far as uh, our jail cost. This year so far, it's going to be like three point two.
I think that's the number.
With people in jail and plus our regular costs. And uh, so we have no idea what that's going to be down the road either. It's really hard to predict that.
If we were. Hold on a second, I, I just got a text message from Mark Robertson and he's trying to ask a question. Mark, can you hear me?
He'll have to unmute himself.
Yeah, I can.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
We can indeed. Please go ahead and ask that question.
I, I just, maybe I misunderstood, but there was. In the, in the beginning, Jesse, you talked about that new uh, position possibly, and you were saying it was. Five hundred and some thousand dollars. Um, I was saying. Is that for an entire department or one person?
No, that's the unfunded positions. That's the value of the unfunded position.
The all of the unfunded. Okay, all right. I was gonna say, if it was for a position, I want to apply.
We gave us all a raise when you weren't here.
Does that include the twenty two thousand for the part town?
Yeah, that is in there. Yes, I have not moved it out. I'm.
I like the idea of them funding that out of operational money.
Yeah, I, I think that's a very important position as well up there. That that helps us be more responsive to builders within the city, which has been a continual complaint. Uh, with the city stand with things going through, they're working as hard as they can and as fast as they can, but there's just so much backlog.
It will give assistance to the process.
Is everyone here in favor of pursuing that position?
I am.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Mark?
Yeah, uh, for that, yes.
Very good, very good. All right, so consider that, work that into your plans. Okay.
And then I had another.
Go ahead, Terry.
Uh, with the stormwater uh, uh, fund and stuff coming, all the changes we have to our requirements. Now, we're going to have to come up with roughly about two million a year for that, right?
But we have, we have two pretty large projects that are are starting um, this uh, next fiscal year. Um, one, we have set aside ARPA funding for that project. And the other project, I believe we got um, DEQ funding for half and the city, we're using the fund balance for the other half. So we have two pretty large projects covered.
That the one behind uh, the, I mean, behind the high school. The creek behind the high school.
Gypsy Hill is one of them.
It's in Cole Avenue.
Yeah, Cole Avenue and Gypsy Hill are the two main projects that we have going on right now. Or that we will have.
Did not include that one.
No.
I remember that.
Uh, the, if if we can fund that radio system earlier in the four, because the officer was telling us that, yeah, that that we could not put it in place until it was fully funded, of course. Uh, but I understand that that covers, uh, that gives us additional coverage that we don't have right now uh, for the radios as well, gets rid of some dead spots theoretically.
Three, it affects uh, rescue, police and fire.
Makes it more responsive to emergencies, so. That would be a good one to hit early.
Absolutely. Good. All right, you know, I'm going to ask you about your anticipated carryover.
Yeah.
I know it's always a.
A question.
But I know you have a little idea here. And uh, you know, I'm going to ask you about it, so tell me about it.
Um, it is going to be significant again this year. Um, the tax rate that you were set um, for twenty twenty three will affect the carryover. Um, the twenty three budget was based on the old assessments. Um, any additional revenue that comes in um, for any rate above seventy four cents will affect the FY twenty three um, carryover. In addition, a meal, sales, business license and lodging, they're all performing well.
Well.
So we'll be able to carry over from there. Um, what's not as clear yet is what the carryover will be from the expenditure side. Um, I'm calculating a little over a million dollars just from savings on the expenditure side at this point. Um, a lot of that is through open positions. We had some in finance, communication, city manager, there was some, some savings there. In addition to like streets and park maintenance had some open position savings. So from my calculation, about um, seven hundred fifty thousand is from open positions. So now what I really caution us to do is because the school's formula is heavily dependent on personal property and real estate. Those increases that relate or that will affect the school's formula in twenty five and FY twenty six. I, I would propose we set those aside um, so that when we do budgets for those years. That it, that increase in the school's formula does not hit us hard. Um, and that we don't spend it as part of carryover because we're, we're getting that tax revenue now. But it's going to feed into their formula in twenty five and twenty six and cost increases there. Um, so I, I project that we're going to have enough to cover the CIP. And there could be an additional two million dollars that we could put toward the courthouse.
The CIP, has it been funded in a? April approved budget in the last three years?
I believe in twenty two, I thought it was funded in the, the general fund budget, but three out of the last four, including this one, um, it has not been.
So I'd say that becomes standard operating procedure.
Then that included?
You fund the CIP out of your, your carryover and it's worked pretty well. Three out of four years, I would say.
Yeah, I would expect right, like, good carryover numbers to be able to cover CIP. We've had some pretty high cut carryover that I don't expect will continue, I don't think. Um, as we tighten up the budget and we budget for attrition savings and things like that. But it, it should be substantial enough to carry.
All right, so what is, what is the anticipated CIP in twenty twenty four? Is that the million two?
It's over two million.
Um, well, it's the one point two is what we had in the CIP to budget or to fund out the general fund.
Yes.
But there was an additional amount that we had already planned to cover out of carryover. So total, I think it's two point one, two point two million dollars.
All right, so what do you? Truly anticipate the overage to be for twenty twenty three? And I know we won't know it till October, and I knew Leslie doesn't want to.
He's asking earlier and earlier.
I know, it's April.
I know, but you're down.
My very rough numbers are after we set aside the schools. And we also have to account for the increase in the safety net reserve because our budget's growing. We need to set that sixteen and a half percent aside. Um, we'll have a discussion later about whether you want to go to seventeen percent or if you just want to stay with sixteen and a half, that's coming in a month or so, maybe. Um, so we'll have enough to cover CIP plus have another maybe two million dollars to go toward the courthouse project. Those are very rough early estimates, by the way.
So you're over four million? Are you going to give me five?
But a lot of that money is actually spoken for.
Well, we're all going to, we're going to speak to all of it. Yeah, yeah, we're going to spend it, but I, I think the, the point is. In, in twenty two, we ended up with six and a half million over and, and this year we're going to be somewhere between four and five. And I think that we would not be doing our job if we weren't looking at that significant amount of money. And, and I really feel that we need to be planning on where we're going to put that money.
Yeah, but we talked in the last meeting that a lot of that money is already spoken for.
It is spoken for because it's been consistently coming in every year. Our budget produces an overage every year. And, and we therefore, I get, better get smart enough to realize that we're producing an overage. So we, and we do plan for, I mean, we're going to fund CIP out of it, which is healthy. Right, but there's nothing wrong with doing that.
But look at a lot of the things that we kick down the road. I mean, that's the thing that kills me is, you know. I mean, uh, there's some of these things like the library hasn't had any real adjustments except for this roof on it. And, and I don't know, twenty years, thirty years, maybe? I don't know how long it's been there, but, I mean, and there's things like that that we just don't. We say we're going to do a study or we're going to put it in our, our, in our stuff, but, you know, it just gets kicked down the road because it's not a priority.
Well, interestingly enough that you brought the library up because I served on, on that as a liaison. And they had a fourteen million dollar unfunded thing uh, from a study that was done in two thousand and fourteen. When COVID hit, a majority of the stuff that was in that. They determined they couldn't do because library has changed. I mean, there's a lot more electronic stuff and a lot less physical plant library type deals. But times change, so the last study they had was in two thousand and fourteen and, and they really said, well, we don't want that now. So I, I know that we're never going to come up with fourteen million out of pocket at the end of the year and say, oh, let's give this to the library. But if the library, it's one of our mo- most valuable assets in the city and.
It sure proved it, it sure proved it during COVID, I mean.
And our, our numbers are phenomenal, but and we're glad to get the roof on it. We're glad to be addressing the, the water issues over there and.
If I may, that, that last study uh, involved doing everything all at once, and that was why it was fourteen million. This next study involves it in a, in a phased renovation rehabilitation on that, so it isn't all or nothing uh, on that. And I, we do need to, you know, it's a good point. We do need to move forward with things like that. Um, and I don't want us to cut so far that we can, that we're unresponsive uh, to needs on this and.
Into the.
Can't count on overage every time.
Looking forward, these, all of these projects here is, is coming, coming up. This is something that we said we wanted to do also, so the West End and Union Town and Greenways and. Public safety and, you know, the future capital needs for schools. I mean, we have to look at that also.
Union Town's about four and a half, four point two.
And plus the courts that we need to think about that we have to build or renovate or whatever it is that we will come up to do, so.
That does remain the elephant in the closet.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, that's the one that we have to settle.
We really don't want to borrow so much money that we can't pay it, so we want to have them funds coming from somewhere else.
And, and three cents isn't that much money, uh, when you look at it, it's not even a million dollars. And, and, and it's, that to one person sounds like a lot of money, but when you spread it out over all the citizens, it's really not that much money to have good government. And have, and have things working, you know, and that's, and that's, I know it's, it seems like a lot of money, but. You know, we go over this, we antagonize over water rates and stuff like that and. When you say you're going to raise something five or ten percent, that sounds like a lot of money, but when you're raising it six or eight dollars, which was the case with the water fees. That's nothing, you know, and, and to make sure you got good water, you know, good plumbing, uh, I mean, it, it, it's, it's worth to have that money. It's worth to have a little bit of money to, to spare just in case we have uh, problems come up that we can't. We don't want to borrow money for.
I, Ken, Terry, I, and I know that I, I'm always a stickler, but. I understand what you're saying and, and I, to some degree, I, I agree with that, but. You also have to realize that that's not the only fee that's getting raised on, on some of our ci- citizens. Across all of our citizens, but you have to realize that, okay, so we're raising maybe water fee a little bit. Now we're raising their real estate tax. And, and what about when they go into a grocery store and have to pay, walk out just to get a few things and they can't even get out of there. For less than fifty, sixty dollars. What about what they're getting ready to have to pay in gas tax? It's just one after another thing, and you know that as well as anybody, Terry, when you have to buy.
Well, that's, that's another reason.
Food to put in your restaurant.
Mark, that's another reason why we should be keeping the tax as high as we can because those same costs go up to the city, the same costs go up to our employees. They say, I mean, you know, and it, and it's, and it's like, I hate it when we give a raise, but then we won't start it till October because. We're trying to save a little extra money and, and it hurts our, it hurts our staff and, and these people really go above and beyond. What's needed, you know, and, and I just, I, I just hate, I've always. As a business person myself, I have a rating day fund. I put money in that fund anytime I have an overage in case. Like this year, I spent almost seventy thousand dollars on new equipment. I thought I was going to have a heart attack, you know, but I had the money there to pay for most of it. You know, and it's just, I just hate for us to just barely get by, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, the other side of this equation is in February, we heard all the wails of our citizenry. When we had a twenty nine percent residential uh, assessment increase. And if we leave our tax rate where it is now. This is going to cause the average residents to go up over twenty percent on their personal property tax. I mean, on their, on their real estate tax, excuse me, their real estate. And, and they all came in here and wrote us many a letter and. Wailed and protested pretty effectively all through February that the assessment increase was excessive. Well, what we have to do when you have an excessive assessment increase is you have to knock the tax rate down. And we told them at that time in February, when they complained. That wait until you get your tax rate. And if you notice, the city of Waynesboro went from a ninety cent tax rate to seventy nine cents. They reduced.
But they have, they have a lot more uh, sales tax, meals tax uh.
They do.
Than we do and.
They do, but don't you think that a developer is going to see where the best deal's going to be? I, I recommend, I propose that everybody here. Drive down Route two fifty four from, from the angle side past the interstate. And drive into the Waynesboro and see where it says Waynesboro City Limits and drive the one mile to Hopeman Parkway. And look at the housing development that's going on in Waynesboro. And recognize the fact that the population is moving there. And they are offering lower tax rates and they're encouraging Stanton people to move to Waynesboro.
I think a lot of those people, I think a lot of those people are coming from Charlottesville over.
Yeah, I think they're becoming a bedroom community for Charlotte. So I, I would encourage Stanton residents to drive down Middlebrook uh, road and see all the uh, new developments there.
It is, it's looking very good out there. I was there yesterday.
I just feel that our, our, our city's incomes aren't directly comparable until we have Stanton Crossing online. And that's going to take a whole lot of money poured into it.
We're talking about two uh, two million probably for the waters, five point two for a water uh, tower, which we'll have to have because it'll affect the pressure in that whole side of town. And, and, and that money, we just, we might get some grants for it, but you can't count on grants.
And I think, I think it's going to be a great thing. Yeah, I think it's going to be a great thing with, when it's done, and as the front of crossing is already showing with the uh, what's coming from the lodging and the meals there from. You know, and across the street from the chicken strip and, and things like that, we're already getting, when, what do they say, four point two over the last. A few years there, yeah, which is very encouraging. Uh, but I mean, it's, it's one of those, it costs money to make money things and.
Exactly.
It's not ready and it's going to take a lot more investment in there uh, as well, because I mean. Waynesboro already has their equivalent of Stanton Crossing, which seems like that Target shopping center um, in there, and so it's, it's a difficult.
Center would have been here if the state would have let them sell the land. Center would have been here if the state would have let them sell the land at, at the Frontier Museum, but they would only let them lease it at the time because that's the shopping center wanted to be here.
Well, guys, I think we should maybe turn to what it is we want that we think is necessary for the city rather than arguing over pennies and we can do that afterwards, but maybe look at our priorities and look at the things that we really, really need because, you know, as Alice pointed out, we have this huge list of things that maybe aren't on our, on our plate right now, but they're coming down the pike. And so just looking at the staffing requests and the equipment requests and, and deciding what, what of those are our priorities? I mean, the one thing that we know that we, that is paid for is education. We know the schools are taken care of, but we have to look at everything else and what are our priorities? And, um, you know, I think what Terry is saying about paying for the CAD system is very important, that part-time position upstairs is important. And I think we need to look at those things and then start looking at, at a, where the tax falls.
But both of them, you could claim that can be solved out of operational monies this year. So those are, those are yeses.
So.
They're with two cent reduction.
They're with the reduction.
They're with the reduction.
Okay, those are just examples. So we're like looking at, could we be putting more money away for future projects? Could we be putting, putting more toward the CIP so we don't have to take out $10 million bonds in years to come?
Well, if we start taking out anymore, our rate is going to be so high because we, we, we're not even rated as a city anymore because we're, our debt to our, to our income is, is, uh, you know, we couldn't get a rating probably right now, I don't think.
Well, I'm just looking at what are, what is our annual, annually, we pay what, $6 million in debt service or?
I believe it's, I mean, it's 5.3.
Yeah.
No, but the, the, the number, how much do we pay? The debt service?
Yeah, it's high.
Um, yeah, it's about 5.3 million is existing debt service.
And then the, and the court will take it up to.
The court will add, well, it's, it's hard to know a number, but we are kind of estimating a $10 million issuance over a 20-year period at like five, five and a half percent interest rate, which adds another like 800 and 2,000 of debt service.
Yeah, I mean, I.
During that time, the Stanton Crossing should fall off.
Stanton Crossing will fall off, I believe, in 2026. Um, and we do have some fund balance in our debt service sinking fund that could help with the court debt until the Crossing debt fell off. I don't know if we'll make it quite all the way there, but we will get at least three, four years.
Good. Yeah, I would just like us to see, see us not have to borrow as much money. It's just, it just makes everything more expensive.
I, I, I agree that we shouldn't have to borrow some and, and I agree that we need to take care of all of our wish lists, but I also agree that we don't need, or we need to make sure that every citizen, because they are our priorities, every citizen can afford to put food on the table and have gas and whatever to get to whatever job they need to go to. And if we keep on increasing the tax rate here, there, they're not going to have it.
I hear you, Mark.
Especially if you're trying to draw first time home buyers and that, that.
There's no homes to buy.
We, we should, we should make sure we're using the right terminology here. We're not increasing the tax rate. We're, we're, I mean, the, the proposed budget we're talking about is a, as far as I know, a historic low at 0.89.
Yeah.
And it's the, it's the value of property within the city that's driving this. Just, just so we're clear on that.
Well, I understand Brad, but, but it's.
I just want to get our terminology right. Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
No, I said, I understand exactly. It is at a historic low, but because of the assessment, it's going to be at a historic high.
Yeah, yeah, the income from it.
Correct.
What people will be paying annually or monthly will go up.
Will be the highest they've ever paid.
And, you know, and that, that's why when.
But you know, everything's going up.
Two cents down, that's 86 cents. That's, I mean, I think.
We're trying to equalize. We're trying, we're trying to find the happy medium here. That's.
I think what the city manager and Jesse have done is terrific that they've found raises for our staff. They've found they're funding the increase in life in, in health insurance. And, you know, those are the important things that we're taking care of right now. And it's funding everything, I think, that the city's needing. I, I would hate to see some of these things go, but.
With the 86 cents, the, where you cut in here, there's no services that are being cut, nothing. I mean, everything that we have today is still going to be in place.
Yes. And I also want to mention that we did make good strides in funding our debt. I mean, that is like a million dollar increase over 23. So a significant portion of the increase is funding debt. We don't have anything in our budget right now, like the transfer from the health fund last year or the transfer from the fund balance. We don't have any of those revenues plugged in. And we do have the attrition savings, which we think is achievable. I mean, based on what we see every year, but, um, I feel confident of, of this budget, but at the same time, yeah, that we do have a lot of future needs, but.
Yeah.
And you always will.
And you always will. That's how it works. But I think that it's important to think too, that if we're in a position where we can, you know, find that sweet spot and get closer to the equalization rate, then that is something, you know, I mean, we all know, you know, we're, we're not even talking about that. I mean, we're not even, we're not even there. We're looking at mid eighties. So, you know, that would still be an appropriate amount of relief to give our citizens who, you know, even though most people, you know, we're, we're fortunate that we can pay our taxes, but some people, it might be the difference between whether they can stay in their home or not. So.
Well, you know, we, we, I don't know if you've been reading emails lately, but I, almost all the emails I've read is keep it at, put it at 89 or higher, leave it at what it is. I mean, we've been getting a lot of those emails, um, this last week. And I mean, uh, and most of complaints are about the party law, but you know, but as far as, you know, they understand that we're going to have to spend this money on the, on the, uh, on the court and, uh, and, and, and I, I think they would rather us be more prepared down the road than, I, I just, I don't know, I'm a, I'm a pessimist. I always worry about what could go wrong or, or, you know, and, and it's, and it saved my butt quite a few years, you know? And, uh, and I just, I would, I would like for us to give them as much leeway as we possibly can.
Jesse, can I ask you one question on, in this book? On page 65. Get down here to the miscellaneous column down at the bottom. I don't understand that. And it, it refers to recovered cost. And.
Are you talking about the negative million?
Hmm, well, I'm talking about the 155,022. Then it jumped to a million 36 in, in this year's budget.
Those were the two revenue lines that I just mentioned that we use to balance the FY23 budget. That's the transfer from the health fund. Um, in FY23, the budget had a revenue line that was transferred from the health fund, meaning we would take $400,000 out of the health fund and put it into the general fund because we didn't have enough revenue to support operations in the general fund. Now, even though that was budgeted, as you know, we're going to have carryover, we're not going to have to do it. So there'll be no actuals on that transfer line and we're going to leave the health fund alone. And there was also another line, I think for 600 some thousand, maybe.
648 for public safety.
Are you looking?
Well, I'm looking now on page 68 and, uh, it was recovered cost and, and I did not, I did not understand what, I just was hoping that you'd be able to shed some light on that.
Recovered, that's probably the Rockingham-Harrisonburg jail buy-in.
That's a different line.
Is that public safety or is that public police security? Oh.
Public, um, safety. I think that's the, the jail buy-in.
You bring a book for everyone?
So that's the amount that's going to go away by 26. So that will be zero in a couple of years. So we'll lose that.
So we'll lose that amount in 2026.
Yeah. So we should probably start planning for that in 25.
Yeah.
So it's not a huge, um, impact.
That's, that's, that's a hell, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Under miscellaneous, I got a little nervous when I saw a million bucks.
Well, that's just. That is the transfer from the fund balance and the transfer from the health fund balance. And that's.
And we're not going to use that in the future.
I do not have it in the, we do not have it in the 24.
Don't plan on it.
No. And we will not have to actually do it.
Further questions from council?
All right now.
Could I just bring the, up the $41,500 for the Stanton Crossing marketing plan?
Sure.
That that's a possible change to the proposed expenditures. Would that have been the only marketing plan that was being done?
No, we funded, um, I believe 107,500 out of ARPA funding for the Crossing. I talked to Billy today. This is, um, to continue that work, this is an extension of that into the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Who is that paid to?
I don't know who they're using.
How was that?
And I don't think Billy's here.
I think it's one of the new.
No, 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 no. I, and I, I don't, I don't want Terry to think that, that I was upset at him. Cause I fully agree with him. I mean, I just think.
Well, I didn't take it, I didn't take it personal.
Follow me, put, put the money away. But right now with, with the inflationary pressures going on and, and the unknown, you know, I, I, I just, I worry for some of our citizens and I, that's why I'm hesitant.
There's two, I agree with you. There's two sides of looking at this. If you, if you cut what they're paying in their mortgage payment, their rent payment, that gives them more money to go spend for meals and sales tax.
Down at Mill Street, right?
Exactly. So, you know, it all, it all goes around in a circle. Well, well, thank you all. I, I like the, uh.
So what's the.
Enhanced. I like.
Direction?
I'm liking the 86 cents.
We have.
I'm, I'm sorry. I know I had to run out for a second, but did we decide to put the money back in for the, for advertising Stanton Crossing or was that a, there was a 107,000?
Yeah, this was an additional. Yeah, this is an additional.
Already in our fund.
And these, um, those things I didn't propose to wipe out altogether. Those are things I'm hoping we can squeeze into the carryover.
Right.
Um, because I think the wharf trees need to be addressed. The sidewalks are, are very like, they're getting.
A lot of bill.
So I'm not proposing that we eliminate that list. I was just proposing we fund it a different way since we know our carryover will be significant again.
That'll be at tourism.
Well, I, I want to go down in favor of the 86 cents. I, I think this is a move in the correct direction.
Well, I'll take it to the opposite extreme. I think we should leave it at 92. Um, and I'd be happy with anything above 89. I mean, but I, I, I think anything that we could do right now would be, help us in the future.
Uh, well, I'm in favor of 86. Since everything, there's no, no reductions, I'm, I'm in favor of 86 personally. It's just my vote.
Yeah. Well, I've told you all along, 85 was the number that I was looking at, but I can live with 86 because I think that gives an appropriate amount of relief to our citizens based on the high assessments. And it's still, it still allows us to, to do the things that, you know, we need to do. We're not cutting any services. We're not cutting, you know, anything that, that we, we are still providing for the citizens.
I think Jesse's shown, uh, very well how, in, in ways I didn't expect that we would be able to find some money, uh, without cutting any direct services, but I'm, it's not the 27th yet.
Well, you got to.
Yeah, I was.
Mister Airlid.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything that I, I really object to other than, um, I'd really like to see the enterprise, the enterprise zone incentives of it's $20,000 to stay in. And I just like.
I don't know about that.
People to be using that. I mean, I, I can't imagine that a small business owner would want to be accessing those funds if they knew about it, but.
A lot of the enterprise zones are in the West End.
So going down to. No, but I thought you said you were just going to take, you would be taking that out.
Well, she's going to.
I would take it down to 10,000.
Um, I thought 86 was at 20.
86, no, we would reduce it by another 20,000. We would leave 10,000 in that account. So how?
It's currently at 30.
It's currently at 40. We had already reduced it 10 in the proposed budget.
And it's been that way for several years.
For the last three years.
Since 2016.
Nobody has used it since 2016.
You don't tell anybody, nobody's going to use it. Yeah, I, I, that's something.
If, if we were to use the 10,000 next year in 2024, then maybe it would be a good program and we would expand it in the future.
Yeah.
But, but I think it's.
If we're going to say we're open for business, we should be, you know, open for business. And, yeah, offering those incentives. Um, and the only other thing, just bringing up with you guys, um, you know, reducing the potential carryover for, for the next budget is just a risk if we're going to. Yeah, that's a little scary if we're raising the proposed meals tax, you know, save. I mean, it looks like everything is going to be fine.
And those, um, proposed, those increases in revenue, that's not taking us up to our projected 23.
Right.
That, um, it's still.
That's still.
Okay, so it's below projections.
So it's safe. It is still under FY23 projections, but still over the FY22 actuals. Um, I would say it's probably maybe a little bit closer to 22. So we could still go down 300,000 in meals tax or sales tax and we're still fine. I mean, so that we have allowed for some economic downturn in those numbers. We're not going all the way up to the projections.
Well, then I think.
Cause I would feel very uncomfortable because those are not real numbers quite yet.
That makes me feel better about it.
Are we all going to arm wrestle Terry here?
So looking towards the future, how will this affect the schools going forward?
That's, um, the schools are going to fare very well, um, because of the increases in the property taxes this year. That is coming in about $900,000 above budget. And the, um, increase, um, in the real estate tax revenue is going to affect schools.
Yeah. That was like a 6% increase.
26% of those increases will flow into their FY25 formula and another 26 in their FY26 or another 26% in their FY26 formula. Um, it's not all recognized the very next year. It is spread over two years, but it will increase funding to the schools. And that's kind of why I want to set aside that particular part of the carryover that relates to those taxes that belong to the schools. I want to set that aside and not spend it as carryover, so.
Well, uh, so that won't, it won't be part of our carryover.
No, I will, I will, I will propose to exclude it before, um, I give you that, I'll show it, but exclude what's available to be spent.
Right. Okay.
Further comments?
Well, y'all worked hard this week. Thank you for going over this.
It's far better than I'd hoped.
Yeah, it's, I'm surprised. I was thinking that we'd have pitchforks.
But this still doesn't leave, this doesn't leave any money for the West End or it doesn't leave any money for, for Union Town. So they're just, they're just kind of dead soldiers.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have carryover, but as far as I know, you guys want to put it toward the JDR to help offset, like to reduce any debts that we want to take out.
Like Steve said, that's the elephant in the room.
We don't want to take on a whole lot of other debt until we know what we're dealing with.
I think once we know that, then we'll have a lot more information and it's just going to make, create a situation where we're just going to have to really prioritize going forward. Um, and so, but, you know, like, you know, I think Jesse has some really great ideas going forward and ways to kind of make some of that happen. And so we're just going to keep an eye on things and we'll continue to work together on this, but it's just going to be kind of honing in on your priorities a little bit more than maybe you've done.
Yeah.
I mean, we.
Very good.
Very good. We do have to. Keep on kicking these things down, kicking these things down the can.